Meeting to order six thirty P M Monday, April thirteenth, two thousand and twenty via video teleconference. I'd like to welcome everyone to tonight. We apologize having to do this remotely, but it's the best we've got at this stage. As you know, the public, you can follow on YouTube. And you can also put your public comments through to comments at Cheshire C T dot org. We will be taking live comments from members of our community as best we can. We'll try to respond to any relevant questions regarding the budget meeting. The majority of the budget meeting tonight is going to be done by the Budget Chair, Mr. Barrow. Thank you for agreeing to take over the budget before this session. Thank you to Tim Slocum, who's done it for a number of years. And Tim, as Tim moved on to become Vice Chair with Mr. Bowman's resignation. It's great, David, to have you at the helm of budget as well. So thank you to both of you guys. Okay, so with that, I'd like to call for a roll call. Arnett, are you going to be doing that?
Sure. Okay, Mr. Borrowey.
Present.
Mr. Jinks.
Here.
Ms. Nichols. Sylvia, she's.
She's muted, but here.
Yeah, we saw her.
Mr. Chairman Oris.
Here.
Mr. Slocum.
Here.
Mr. Talbot.
Here.
Mr. Veliver.
Present.
Mr. Walsh. Mr. Chairman, we have a quorum.
Great, can we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the Republic. To the Republic, which stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Justice for all.
And hopefully, everyone at home that's watching is is doing okay during these interesting times. Hopefully, we'll back at be back at it personally soon. The first item on the agenda is proposed fiscal year two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one operating budget, annual capital budget and five-year capital expenditure plan. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Chairman Barrow.
Thank you, Mayor Oris, appreciate that. And we, in these unprecedented times, it's greatly appreciative of all those who are able to attend and be part of this. It's one of the most important things that the Town Council does on an annual basis and doing it in such an unusual fashion. We're still trying our best to make sure that the public is involved. And and as we get the presentation from the Town Manager and from staff, we'll move forward with that, we'll move forward with questions from Budget Committee and Council members, and then open it up as the chairman, as the mayor said, if we have questions from the public towards the end, so we can get some of those resolved as we move along, rather than waiting till the public hearing. Great way to try to be involved. Everybody, thank you for your patience, and I really am ready to turn it over to the Town Manager for his presentation.
All right, thank you, David. I hope everyone can hear me okay. You hear me all right?
Yep.
Yes.
All right, so most of this is going to be via PowerPoint, so I'm going to try to share my. If everyone could kind of mute their lines, it'll probably be good for this point unless there's anything. If you have any questions, just feel free to jump in, either unmute your line or hit your spacebar to have me pause if you need me to, because there's no issues there at all. So I'm going to try to share my screen now, so just bear with me one second. All right. Does everyone see the slide on your screen? Hopefully, that's a yes.
Yes.
All right, thank you. All right, so I appreciate everyone's patience as we go through this again. You know, we're kind of new to some of this technology, but we're doing our best to replicate what we would have in a regular council meeting and around the table at a workshop. So thank you for giving us this opportunity. Today, I'm just going to be giving a very high-level overview of the operating and new this year capital budget at the same time. We picked quite a year to try to do both budgets at the same time, which has been our goal for a number of months now. But again, I'll try to make this as brief as possible as I try to cover a lot of ground. As everyone said, there's certainly a number of opportunities later tonight or at future meetings to ask questions about any of the details here, and we encourage the public to reach out with those questions. So to start, I'll start with the operating budget. The fiscal twenty-one operating budget, as proposed, is one hundred and seventeen million, six hundred and fourteen thousand, five hundred and thirty-two dollars. On the general government side of things, the proposed budget is thirty-three million, nine hundred and seventy-eight thousand, four hundred and ninety-seven dollars, or an increase of three point eight six percent. The education budget, just slightly changed from what was presented and approved by the Board of Education, based on just one proposal that I've made, comes in at seventy-five million, five hundred and forty-five thousand, fifty-four dollars, two point nine eight percent increase. You'll see debt service, which we'll be talking about later tonight, is an increase this year of about four point nine one percent, or three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Capital non-recurring funds, we've slightly altered how much we were appropriating for capital non-recurring this year by reducing it a hundred thousand dollars from the one point one million we appropriated last year. Contingency stays as what we budgeted last year, or again, in the current fiscal year, one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. And this year, there is no proposed state teacher pension assessment, which those who were following last year know was a proposal from the governor's budget last year to have, and towns were sort of faced with the prospect of budgeting for something that we weren't sure whether it was going to come to pass or not. So we budgeted last year two hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars, which we will not need to budget again next year. Just a little context, and I think, you know, the first one certainly could be underlined twice or repeated, but the ongoing COVID nineteen pandemic is clearly a huge budget context. It it's worth noting that we finalized this budget by charter. It was presented on March, right at the very, very early stages of what we're going through now and over the past month. The world's very different, obviously, from where it was five weeks ago, and we are obviously still monitoring very closely and trying to evaluate and estimate the impact on on the next year's budget. So this is going to, I'm sure, be an ongoing consideration, and not to mention with current year revenues and a variety of other critical pieces of information that we'll be discussing, I'm sure, throughout this process. But other context that that we always look to as we've been developing the budget, the state budget, which was presented by the governor back in February. This year, it mirrors pretty much what we had budgeted, what we had estimated from the second year of the biennial budget. It is lower by just about thirteen thousand dollars, literally just about spot on to what we expected. Of course, with other expenditures going up, that's state revenue staying flat is, of course, an effect, a negative. But but we are certainly appreciative of the fact that we have predictable, a little bit more predictable budget numbers from the governor, at least at the outset. Again, I think everything will come with this overall caveat of how is the COVID nineteen pandemic going to affect those numbers going forward will remain to be seen. So we also have our union contracts that are all expiring and under negotiation, as we know, right now. So that's another critical piece of information. We have placeholder budget numbers in this budget to account for where we think some of those wage numbers may end up. But of course, that's all subject to change and subject to negotiation as we move forward there. And then again, kind of impacting really both operating and capital, but when we get onto capital, the school modernization committee's efforts, and also the Bartlam Park South planning process, you know, both of those are major initiatives by the town on the capital side. Those are critical to keep in mind as we consider some of the projects that that we'll be talking about through the capital budget. I'll try to breeze through some of this a little quicker. Again, we'll be posting all of this on our website and again emailing it out, make sure everybody on the council has it to look through later. But here's a pie chart showing our revenues. We are very, you know, as everyone is aware, reliant on property taxes, as most towns in Connecticut are. And you'll see our variety of other grants and miscellaneous departmental revenues. Probably easier to see here with the dollars, you'll see from a revenue standpoint, you know, where the various sources of revenue are. And again, I have a note there, the detail begins on page ninety-eight of the budget book. I should say at the outset, I should, I think it's page one oh four. I should say at the outset, for those that have their budget books in front of them, formerly, you may recall this, the one book was referred to as sort of the big book and the small book. Because we've combined capital budget with the operating budget, the small book is now larger than the other book. So we're going to kind of refer to them as the general book and the detail book. So whenever we refer to pages in the detail book, which is sort of the landscape version, we will do so by kind of destining that at the detail book. Moving on, just to compare kind of where we were from a revenue standpoint about five years ago, you'll see how the various percentages have changed as our grant and state dollars have decreased. We've had to increase our reliance on the property tax. Fiscal sixteen, that was about seventy-eight point nine percent, and now that's up to about eighty-two point five percent. On the expenditure side, you'll see here, various departments of the town, including the Board of Education. And again, here they are in a column format where you can see some of the numbers that we'll be going through over the coming weeks. Some of the key budget drivers, just on our overall two point nine seven percent increase. Board of Education budget, again, is the largest component of the overall town budget. Responsible for about one point nine two percent of that budget increase. Net debt service increases of three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, which again, we'll be talking about tonight. On the general government side, our town retirement and O P E V expenses, our post-employment benefits expenses have increases in this proposed budget of three hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars. Medical insurance trust, which we'll be talking about tonight, and of course, always a little bit of a moving target as we try to evaluate the current year of claims as we're self-funded. Comes in as an increase of one hundred and seventy-six thousand, nine hundred and twelve dollars. We have some uncertainty in the solid waste world with respect to tip fees for next, for the next contract with the Covanta Country Water Facility. And so though we have estimated those increases to come in at a hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars. Liability and workers' comp insurance and social security changes, dollar changes of a hundred and one thousand dollars. All others kind of summing up to around a hundred and fifteen. So just to give you some key budget drivers there. All right, just to talk a little bit about debt service. Historically, the town has been on a an effort to reduce our debt services a percent of our budget, a ton of our expenditures from what is north of ten percent. Ten percent of our budget down to about five point nine, actually out the door with respect to what's budgeted. The way we got there has been through a variety of efforts, not only borrowing less, but also using debt service reserve funds and saving up, knowing that we had the large treatment plan upgrade in. So this is a chart that many of you are probably familiar with and will be talking about in more detail. But the town, again, over the last few years, has been committed to, again, reducing this net debt number. And if you'll look over here, I'm not sure if you can see, you see my cursor on the screen or no?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, great. So right here is fiscal twenty-one. Important to note that over here in the first column, this is our gross or correction settlement to reduce the amount of actual debt service we hit and we pay for out of the general fund. The challenge here, of course, and we talked about this last year, is there's, this is always a plan to kind of smooth in the increase, but eventually that increase is is coming. And so this year, well, last year, we only increased by sixty-five thousand dollars. This year, we're having to bite more of the bullet on three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of debt service with these offsetting funds here. But you'll see in future years, and these are not cumulative, these are, these are annual increases of debt service in future years. Other other windfalls or other reserve funds that were of about eight hundred thousand to nine hundred thousand a year, so. Planning for it, but again, that's going to inform some of our conversations along capital budget and the impact on. So we'll be going through this over. And again, just in the general fund, blue is our actual debt, the red and blue combined, really. And you'll see that as those use of reserves are completing. And here it is, again, we're still going to be projected to be in a good spot with respect to what the bond reading agencies like to see. But it is a factor in with monetization in the future. It's something I'm just going to be talking a lot about how we make sure we can. So moving back to the mill rate on the operating budget, this is just a snapshot on what the average tax is not a revaluation year, last revaluation year on property. So that always kind of makes it a little harder to calculate. This year, if the average household, average taxpayer in town has, residential taxpayer has a house assessed at two hundred and twelve thousand dollars, which is kind of a roughly appraised value of three hundred and three, seven twenty, that's right off the grand list average. And to average vehicles, their total taxes last year were seven thousand, six hundred and seventy-seven dollars. With the proposal that you have in front of you now, that same, if they're assuming no change in that value of that house or those vehicles, would be an increase with that mill rate of two hundred and fifteen dollars a year. So that's the that's sort of a snapshot of the moment. We also historically have shown this using the change in the average as well with respect to the properties that change. Most people in a non-reval year, their home, unless they've made additions or value doesn't change from year to year. So it's not necessarily indicative of what would happen to the average taxpayer. But in this case, our average property increased from two hundred and twelve thousand to two hundred and fourteen. Has an overall effect of a house and two vehicles looking a little bit larger at two hundred and eighty-one dollars a year, or three point six six percent of an increase. We've used that calculation in years past, and so this is just a ten-year snapshot. All right, so now I'm just going to move on into the capital budget. You know, historically, we do the capital budget in the summer. For those, you know, watching at home, this year, we tried to do them both at the same time. Again, the two budgets inform each other very directly and not only from debt service, but from capital, cash for capital or capital non-recurring budgetary items. So there's, we were, what we're trying this year for the first time is to at least present and consider the capital budget at the same time here in the spring, when the hopes of approving or largely approving the capital projects in, again, only late April or late May now, with the exception of maybe some, a couple of larger projects if necessary, and we'll be getting into that later. Certainly, any large project would still need to go to referendum, which typically we send our projects to referendum to coincide with the election in November. So that would still hold true. But this at least, I think, gives us a chance, while it was a lot of work, and we appreciate all the departments and the Board of Education for going along with this plan this year. I think this gives us an opportunity to to consider some of this upfront, hopefully make some decisions and approve the budget in large part while we, while we keep our eyes on the rest of the, how everything unfolds over the summer. But again, historically, we do this in the summer and to prove by late August with a November referendum. Capital budget includes a five-year plan for capital expenditures. But the first year, just for those new to this or watching from home, is the only year we actually appropriate and officially authorize when the town council makes their their decisions on capital. Projects, the way we prioritize our capital projects are those that are previously included on the plan wherever possible. Obviously, the point of a plan is to try to strategize when you can afford and smooth the expenditures on and the debt onto your. We've also prioritized new projects that'll lead to future cost savings and returns on investment. And again, recommended projects that will not be in conflict with any future. So the recommended five-year capital improvement plan, I received requests totaling seventy-four million, six hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars over the five years of the plan. I was able to make some productions of this totaling six point seven, eight million dollars for. This is an increase of nine point two million, over last year's adopted five-year. It's important to remember that offsetting grants, so that's really a gross cost, if you will. We have offsetting grants for available cash funding, the total seven point seven million dollars to help reduce the total impact and what we'd actually have to borrow projects, which reduces it to a five-year plan of about sixty million, one hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars. The past five-year capital improvement plans have averaged fifty-three point six million gross or forty-four point four million net over the last five adopted budgets. And here that is in a table showing some of our prior years. And some of the larger gross numbers you'll see there on each of the, the upgrade at the sewer treatment plant, which failed referendum once and then passed.
Hey, Sean, I don't mean to interrupt you, but your voice is going in and out. Is there any way to correct that? It's going low to more easily heard.
Is it? Okay, here, let me try, let me try not using headphones and see if that makes it any better. Can you hear me now at all? Is it any better?
Seems to be.
Yeah, I think it was, I think there's a short or something in the mic because you were, you'd go low and then come back up.
Okay, I apologize. Do you want me to go back at all any?
No, 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 no.
No, that's fine, just keep going.
All right. I apologize, I hope it's a little better now.
That was a unanimous no.
I'll just start from the top.
Yeah, could you start all over? Thanks.
Much better now, Sean.
All right, sounds good. So all right, so moving on from the history of five-year capital plans, again, we just talked about this a little bit, but this is the, our projected debt services a percent of expenditures going forward. And again, you'll see that out. Some of this is assuming kind of average capital project approvals in the future years. But you'll see that our percentages, while we've been on a downward trend, positive trend for years now, we are with some of the projects we've taken on, and the lack of availability of offsetting reserve funds, we're going to be increasing our debt service modestly as a percent of the overall. And so, again, the fiscal twenty-one first-year projects I referred to that would be requested for appropriation, total twelve million, one hundred and ten thousand dollars. This is an increase of five hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars over the fiscal twenty adopted capital budget. And I'll try not to go in the interest of time, and I know there's going to be a lot of questions. I'll try not to go through all of these, but just to show by category, the kind of projects that you'll see. And again, this is across the entire five-year plan. But administrative, administration, finance and technology totals three point six six eight million dollars. You see the variety of projects that are included there. On the public property side of administrative finance, you'll see a variety of projects, total three point eight nine. On the planning function area, we have land acquisitions slated for a hundred and ten thousand dollars in future years. Public safety, on the fire department specifically, we have equipment, protective clothing purchased, three hundred thousand dollars, and then a few engines and pumper replacements. Public Works, the largest component of the Public Works budget, you'll see over the five years is road paving program right there as number four, if you will, the fourth item, ten point three million dollars. But also full-depth road reconstruction projects for some, some roads that cannot be just repaved at this point, need to be rebuilt, totaling three million, sixty-five thousand dollars. Those are two of the larger components of the Public Works, but you'll see a variety, including placements. Again, it's important to remember, these are over the five years on the budget books. Into that section of the budget. Water pollution control. The estimate for the Elmwood, almost a million dollars. Inflow filtration remediation, which I from the MS four requirement, six hundred thousand dollars. Heavy-duty vehicles and also the Moss Farms Pump Station out here is a one. Leisure services and recreation, the biggest change here, it's unfortunate. For the design. And that was slated to happen a few weeks ago, and of course, had to be postponed. We are, I hope, going to be moving forward with that in kind of virtual fashion, but we are geared up to get a lot of public feedback, public participation. But of course, in the current environment, this is hard to do. So we will be talking about nonetheless, the Chinatown property, Bartlam South, if you will. Multi-approached, developing some some great ideas, I think, that we have, working with the consultant community based on the surveys we've looking forward to that conversation and looking forward to continuing to advance that. But again, there's a placeholder of five point six million. In prior years, we had two million dollars in there as an initial placeholder. And you'll see the balance of the leisure services and recreation project requests. And then on the Board of Ed side, just to highlight a few, code compliance and ADA projects totaling two point four million, roof five point two. And then a variety of projects. Those all total twenty-five million. And so with that, just to go to Cheshire C T dot org, all these documents, including the and with that.
Yeah. Let's soldier on and see what do you want to take questions on that overview now, or do you want to get into your next part first?
You know, it's up to you. If you want to, if there's any questions on the overview, I'm happy to go through them, or we can.
I think we need more meat on the bone, if you know what I mean, before we get questions.
Yeah. All right, then we'll, we'll move on to your departments.
Okay. All right, can you hear me? Is it any better now? I'm just trying to change some settings here.
Because it's good at times and then it fades out at times, so just keep going. We'll look.
All right. Okay, so. All right. Just one second. Yeah, a few of the areas that we wanted to make sure we touched on tonight, specifically within pension and health insurance. So maybe we'll just start with pension. Some of this will be new for folks that weren't on the council last year that maybe aren't as familiar, but we've had some discussions in recent years about our interest rate returns. Our returns are interest rate assumptions, sorry, for our pension funds. And and we have certain decision points that we're going to have to make this year that the auditors are going to put on us with respect to mortality tables. So I think with with that, if that's an okay place to start, Dave, we'll, we'll go there and I'll have Jim, Jessica, probably walking through some of that, if that's all right.
Good, yeah. Hopefully, his volume will work better.
Yeah, hopefully. Jim, can you hear us?
Yeah, I can hear you. I'm thinking maybe we could start, Sean, there was a summary I did of of some of the scenarios that you just mentioned where we have some decisions to make with regarding rate of return assumptions. And I don't know if you could call that up on the screen. Sean, can you hear me okay? Okay.
Yeah, I can hear you. Hold on one second, just got to, got to pull it up to share it. Here we go. All right. That should be it. All right, can you see?
Yes.
Do we need to zoom in at all, or is it, are you seeing it all right?
If you can zoom, it helps.
But if you can zoom in a little, because only half the screen has the
That's
There you go.
Much better, Sean.
Yep.
There you go, that's good.
So Sean, maybe I can just kind of start and you can jump in type of thing on this. You know, just looking across the rows, the top row, two thousand and twenty, shows what we budgeted for in the fiscal year we're in right now. And that's also actually what we contributed to those, to our three pension plans, being the firefighter, police and town firefighter, we contributed two hundred and fifty-nine thousand and change, police, one point eight eight four million, and town, one point eight million. For fiscal twenty-one, there's, and let me just remind you, we currently are using a seven point five percent rate of return assumption. That historically was eight point two five. Actually, I think going back before that, it was eight point five. So we've ratcheted it down over the years, unfortunately. We're, we're, we're high now compared to our peers in, Sean, I don't know if there's. We're 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 high now compared to our peers in Sean, I don't know if there's there's another chart where we can show. Rates of return for for our peer group, which I think is pretty telling. This is a summary of all our triple AAA rated peer towns. And you could see we're we're actually the highest of of this group. The averages are at the very bottom of the page, and I've shown it for both Fitch and S S and P. Fitch, the average is six point eight one percent. So our our both our actuary and our accountants both are strongly recommending. That we ratchet our rate of return assumption down to seven percent. And there's a there's a couple ways we can get there. But as you can see, you know, and again, when we go to rating agencies, we're we're comparing this to to this group. And. You know, we we kind of need to drive that down.
Jim, can I jump in for a minute?
Yeah, absolutely.
You know, everybody probably knows, except for the the new guys on the the council, that we've been working at lowering this. So we've identified this as an issue. The rating agencies obviously understand we're working towards lowering it. And I think it would be fair to suggest that this is clearly not the only piece of information the rating agencies are looking at when they are determining a triple A rated. Bond. So you know, I don't want anyone to say that just because we're higher than other peer groups that are triple A rated, that this is the only litmus test they're looking at.
Right. I can't argue.
That that's true, and I would also want to say that once shortly, within the next couple of years. It's going to have to be on the balance sheet that it's not at seven percent if it's higher for municipal and for governments. So if we are at too higher rate, it's going to have a negative effect. As well. So it's going to have to come down because the average that the auditors are finding, our auditors and other things that I'm involved in. Are telling us that municipal budgets have to be at the seven percent or lower, or soon there's going to be a gap. Requirement that you're going to have to start putting that in as a liability. That you're not at the minimum recommended by them, which I believe is seven percent.
Are you familiar with that, Jim? Because we've heard none of that, but we are addressing this issue.
Yeah, I I can say that there's certainly more pressure to to ratchet this down. To the point where, you know, we we never, our our auditors never really weighed in on it, but but they have concerns now because we are very high compared to the. The the PAC and. You know, we're going to be going out. I'll speak to that in a little while, but we're we're going to be bidding out for actuarial services this year. I mean, auditing services, I'm not sure, you know, if we'll retain our same auditors. I think this is going to be a big issue going forward.
Jim and Sean, this is Tim. I I think the real impact for everyone here to understand is that to achieve that goal, we're simply having to put more. Into our pension fund calculations every year is what it comes down to. So it's becoming a budget driver. Exponentially, we we just, we either face it now, we face it later, but that's sort of what it what it really means. And I presume that's what you're modeling on the first chart you laid out for us.
Yeah, that's correct. I mean, and I think it's, well, the history predates me a little bit, but before the town was on a steady. Phase in plan of the last time, not just the interest rate assumptions, but other. Respect to the police plan and Jim, you can correct me if I'm wrong. Sometimes when we make these changes to to a police pension, to a pension plan. Or with interest rate assumptions or other factors. Because the dollars are so significant for the impact they have, even though they're amortized amortized out so far, there's such a large dollar amount that we often phase them in. And I think you'll recall last year was our first budget where we we officially paid our entire police arc. Our actuarily required contribution.
Yeah.
At least under the old mortality tables and the things that they've now required us to change. So Jim, maybe we can talk about the mortality.
And that's true. We haven't, last year was the first year we we actually contributed our actuarially recommended contributions for off. And since two thousand eleven. Downturn in the market. Since, you know. Five to seven point five during that timeframe is what predicated such a large increase in our pension contributions. But you know, I I maybe just just to move along, our actuaries did come up with some suggestions. As as a way to perhaps mitigate the increases, even if we were to go down to a a seven percent. And and maybe I could just walk you through what that looks like, and that's based on this chart here. So if you look in the upper right hand corner, again, we this year we're paying three point nine million. Based on on the last actuarial valuation that we had performed, which was July one eighteen. The projection for twenty twenty one was four point one seven four million. So. If if nothing changed. That's probably what we would be budgeting this year. But. Update that four point, the actuaries did update that four point one seven four million. Based on our asset experience during the period from July one eighteen to June thirty nineteen. And you can see that effect actually made it go up even a little bit more to four point two 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 million. And I know the market had a great year last year overall, but there was actually a little bit of dip in June, which is why. That didn't help us out that much at that point in time. If 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 we went to the mortality tables. That both our auditors and actuaries insist that we must use going forward. And reduced our rate of return assumption. Down to seven percent. We'd actually be paying four point eight million. I'm sorry, I think I, Sean, do I have that right? The.
No. No, that's just mortality table.
Mortality table alone, based on our current. Rate of return assumption, the contributions for twenty one would actually go up four point eight million dollars. You could see that those mortality tables have a big impact on. Our contributions. Just just to keep kind of walking through this chart. The next couple scenarios show. Seven point two five percent. And then there's a couple more scenarios below that at seven percent. But let me explain, there's a column there called amortization period. And this is another assumption or variable that. The actuaries. Can consider or had or that we could consider is is if we increase our amortization period. Of phasing in the mortality table or the lowering of the discount rate. We can do that over a period of years, and right now we're slated at sixteen years based on when they've been phasing in various. Assumptions that we've had going all along. But they could. They could increase that amortization period to twenty or even twenty five years. And that has a huge impact on how much of that increase in expense we have to recognize it each year going forward. So you can see. For the seven point two five percent. I show what it would be with a sixteen year amortization period that we currently use. It would be five point one two one million. But if we switch to a twenty year. It would drop it to four point six million. If we went all the way to seven percent. And stated our current sixteen year amortization, it would be five point four million. What if we switched to a twenty five year? Which is the maximum amount that towns are allowed to amortize these expenditures, it would drop it down to four point four million. Now that four point four million would be an increase of four hundred and ninety five thousand in total. Over what we contributed in fiscal twenty. But it would, it would bring us to where we, you know, are hoping to get to at some point. That four hundred and ninety five thousand dollar increase would be partly absorbed by the Board of Ed. So that's that that includes actually the town, Board of Ed, pool, WPCD. And also the cafeteria fund all contribute to.
So so Jim, if I could step in just a second. I see that the on line nineteen of the Excel sheet, it says town manager recommended.
Yeah.
So is this Sean, in fact, what you've built into your budget? Or are we talking about this? This part of your budget calculation?
So it it is. There's a caveat to that, and it's going to involve the Board of Education and when we have this information versus when they approve theirs.
Right, so there hasn't been increased.
There's right, the as I understand it, the the budget that is in the Board of Ed, I'm sorry, the the number in the Board of Ed budget. Was actually, I think, held flat from the prior year. And so at the moment, there's an increase that would need to happen on the Board of Ed side. However. That that line twenty or nineteen here is what. Is what I've budgeted on the town side of things, and we'll have a breakdown of that in a little bit. But that's what in what in order to offset part of that increase, we'd have to absorb for the Board of Ed to increase onto their share. We'll talk about these these phase in scenarios over two years. I know there's a lot of confusing information here at one time, but. This this will show us an option that will help mitigate that cost over two years where we'd actually be at seven percent. With the with the required mortality tables.
I have a second. I have a second part to that question. Is there anything? Problematic with the twenty five year amortization? Does does that, are we different than our peers on that? Is that a common way to go? Is that like junk bonds? I mean, what are we dealing with here?
Little bit there. I think it is a common way to go to help mitigate the increases associated with. Not only the mortality table, but also the decrease in the rate of return assumption. I, you know. Unfortunately, if if we ever had planned experience that was significantly negative. That would potentially increase our contribution. Going forward, we we wouldn't be able to use the increase of that amortization period anymore because we'd already be maxed out. You know, in five, if if we were to go with that twenty five in five years, it would be back down to twenty, which would give us a little bit more wiggle room at that point. But in the short term, we'd be kind of like up against the wall as far as having any pools in our school bag to try to mitigate any potential increases. I know, although I'd say the the exposure there is probably limited because I think. Frankly, these 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 assumptions are probably the biggest exposure that we might have going forward.
Yeah, and if I could just jump in, Jim, I mean, every town is grappling with this too, because especially with the mortality tables, as you can see. Everyone was using the two thousands and now we're required to use what they call the twenty ten mortality table. And that one's really not so much as a choice. That's going to be kind of forced upon us here. And other towns have grappled, kind of speaking to your question, Tim, Glastonbury, I know specifically. Had a large budget increase this year driven almost singularly by this change in the mortality tables. And they were in a spot where they couldn't adjust their amortization period, so they had to just take it all right away in the in that first year. So I suppose it's a silver lining, but we do have a little more flexibility. Other towns that have either already taken advantage of that in the past don't have that same opportunity.
So not only did, you know, our actuaries suggest that increasing the amortization period might be. An opportunity to mitigate these increases, but they also suggested phasing in. The rate of return assumption decrease over a two year period. Now, over the two year period. It would probably overall cost a little bit more. If if we used a phase in approach, but it would. It it would have the potential of easing the burden on the fiscal twenty one budget. As you can see in the next line below, which is the twenty twenty one. Scenario where we have a two year phase in option. So that would result in a four point two nine three overall contribution. Which would be a three hundred and forty six thousand dollar increase over over fiscal twenty. And. You know, finally, just that I put in fiscal twenty twenty two here just to show what that increase would be if we did choose. The two year phase in option. So I mean, think. There you have it, and and. This is this is something I think we're going to have to grapple with. Trying to, I I know this is a lot to absorb, but also I did do one other schedule. That shows the allocation between the town and the Board of Ed. I don't know if that's something you can put on the. Screen. Because Tim, you you raised a good point that when Sean prepared his budget. He. He assumed that we would be using the new mortality table. And in ratcheting down to a seven percent rate of return assumption. And. And using a twenty five year amortization period. The Board of Ed, unfortunately. When they, when they presented their budget, didn't have all the information. That we had later on when we did ours, and so they just budgeted the same amount that they had last year. So you could see here. The column on the left is is what is in the budgets right now. Both in Sean's budget for the Water Police Control Department, the pool, the town. And then the Board of Ed budget, what they put in for their budget. And I just, I have a note here on the bottom too, that the Board of Ed is partially. Offset by contributions from the cafeteria fund, so. The the increase there is is a little bit less. For them because their cafeteria, which is a non budgetary fund, does contribute a little bit to their pension. The column on the right are the figures for the two year smoothing, assuming that the council decided to pursue that as an option. Which would probably be the least costly option for fiscal twenty one. To get us to get over a two year period down to the seven percent rate of return. The change is what would, based on the budget that was submitted, would be the decreases. For the town, WPCD and pool, which I I think you could see in totals. Probably about eighty eighty five thousand or so. But there would also be an increase on the Board of Ed budget because again, they didn't budget any increase at all when they prepared their budget this year.
Jim, if you go with the the two year smoothing, then what is what is twenty twenty two look like? As far as the numbers there is opposed to what we'd see in twenty twenty two with what Sean has recommended.
You know, that's a that's a good point. I I don't have that on on the summary that Sean just presented to you. A minute ago. I'll I'll have to get back to you on that. I I know there's a cost to it because you're you're basic basically delaying contributions a year. Is it a significant cost? Probably not all that significant, but I will get back to you.
Peter, I think Peter makes a good point anyway, simply because everyone has to know every year, it's another hump in this category. I mean, we're always climbing a mountain, climbing a mountain, so it's almost whether you do a two year or or go with the manager's recommendation. You still have a hump the following year that you're adding to your budget. So it's almost whether you do a two-year or, or go with the manager's recommendation, you still have a hump the following year that you're adding to your budget.
Thing that we need to see tonight, but, um, you know, it, it is going to be a factor in, in the way, at least I, I make my determination what, which way I'd like to go. So if we could, if we could see what the, what the two-year smoothing looks like, both twenty-one and twenty-two, I do see in line twenty-seven that you have what the scenario is for.
But I need to show you the, uh, what it would be under Sean's.
Exactly, what we're looking at in twenty-twenty-two, if we don't, or, uh, yeah, right, if we don't do the smoothing and go with, uh, what Sean has recommended for this year.
You know, I, I just want to throw out too, uh, we have, uh, updated valuations every year. I'm, I, I still don't have the value, the final valuation for, uh, June thirty-nineteen. But, you know, it, a lot of things can affect these numbers going forward, for better or for worse, you know, for example, if, if assets did very poorly going forward, that could have a negative impact on, on our contribution, uh, amounts. Also, just our experience on, you know, uh, what are, you know, uh, when people retire, or, you know, when, when people die, compared to what the assumptions are, uh, that are used on these plans, uh, could have a favorable or a negative impact. So the numbers do change a little bit, uh, based on experience.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'd be interested in just seeing, and I know Chairman Ors wants to jump into, so, but I, I think I'd just like to see what, you know, what it is based on what you're looking at now, what, what twenty-one and twenty-two would, would look like. Moving in without.
Chairman Barrie?
Yeah, I, I also do think that you're going to have a significant change just when the new evaluation does come in, if you must, because we had a good calendar year, but then you're also going to have the major change of what happened in the last month or a month and a half in the stock market, and when that's going to come back. So we can be talking about some dollars now, uh, for next year, but we're going to have a big, uh, big, big unknown as to what's going to happen. We had a great rate of increase last year at sixteen percent, which was double what, you know, the seven and a half percent, uh, actual, uh, was projected. And so that's a big help, but now whatever we've lost in the last month and may not gain back before we do the next evaluation, is going to make a big difference in this number.
Just a suggestion, if, if we all have questions, which I'm sure we do, maybe we can each raise our hand, so you can call on whoever you would like to ask next, uh, Dave.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Over each other.
Thank you. Good suggestion.
And, and I have a question whenever you want to let me.
Sure, of course, go now.
Sean, can you, can you go back and put up that, uh, that sheet, please? Jim, uh, one of the things, obviously, we've been aware of this to a certain degree, uh, maybe not to the level of urgency you're just putting in front of us, but, you know, we've been working towards lowering these numbers, these return numbers. The one number you haven't put up here is going to a seven and a quarter percent return and pushing the amortization to twenty-five years. Um, obviously, each year is very different, which you just talked about, we don't know what next year brains could be better, could be worse. How would they look at us, uh, if we went to seven and a quarter for twenty-five years and sat there for a couple of years?
Yeah. Actually, Sean and I did have that discussion with them, I can certainly have them go ahead and calculate that.
I think the short version is, they, they weren't very comfortable with it, I don't know if you can hear me, but they, I think because they know we need to get to seven percent, I don't think they wanted to see us using, uh, our, our available, um, resources necessarily to, to make that happen. But, uh, we did have that conversation with them, they could certainly calculate it, I know that's.
Well, I guess my point is, we're talking about a two, two-year phase-in as a potential option. I'm just wondering, you know, I suspect this is going to be a tough year for, for the town, uh, with everything going on. Um, and I'm just trying to find an alternative. Generally, if you have a good story to tell, we're working towards what their requirements are. You know, is it something where we can, or we're, we're not telling them we want to stay at seven and a quarter long-term, but something a little bit longer than the two-year phase-in, I guess is what I'm asking.
All right, those are good, good observations, and I can certainly get some, some, some more numbers on, on all of that.
Yeah, thank you, and again, I'm not saying where I'm going to fall out on this, but I'd like to have that information just to look at it and see what that looks like in terms of a total contribution compared to what you have up here. And, you know, we can have that conversation in light of all of the other things going on within the budget. Thank you, Jim.
Yep.
You know, if I could just add one more comment, uh, getting back to, you know, Dave mentioned about, uh, the asset, assets and, and, you know, granted, we're, we're kind of in uncharted territory here with, with the COVID, uh, impact on the, investments, but, um, I just want to remind everybody that an actuary's, do their valuations, they smooth the asset value increases and decreases over a five-year period, so they don't have such a startling effect on any given year. So I just want to throw that out there. Because I'm, I'm certainly.
That's always a good reminder.
You know, decrease in assets, uh, going forward for this June. But they would be smoothed over a five-year period.
Thank you, Jim, that's good to reminder to know when we're thinking and deliberating.
I think Don Walsh has a question, the problem is if I'm screen sharing.
Oh, Don, I didn't see that, okay.
Sorry about that, um, I just have one question, with the twenty-five-year amortization on it, will that have any impact on our rating? Would they, do they look at that as, you know, how many years out you're going on that?
Not that I'm aware of, uh, I, I think they would be more encouraged by the fact that we've actually committed to a lower discount rate. I think they would put more emphasis on that. And, and it's, the twenty-five years is something we're certainly allowed to do, you know, based on the way the actuaries calculate this.
So it's best just to try to get it as low and, and do it over the twenty-five years versus, um, keeping it at sixteen or whatever.
I would, I would say absolutely, yeah. That's their recommendation.
Yeah, and I think people can feel, I know it's obvious, but you can feel how painful this is. I mean, my, the overall general government budget increase, um, that I propose to you is one-point-two-five million dollars. Pension largely driven by this, but pension and retirement, Popev expenses accounts for three-hundred-and-fifty-nine thousand of that one-point-two. So, I mean, th- this is unfortunately one of those things that squeezes out a lot of other stuff we'd love to do. Um, so I think, you know, this is why you see so many different iterations and variations of, of options here, because it's very hard. It's money that you spend that you don't really feel like you're getting a lot, um, sort of for, if you will.
Sean, maybe to.
Rob has a question.
Okay, sure.
Oh, go ahead, Jim, and I'll follow you.
Yeah, you know, the other thing I kind of want to remind everybody too, that these are defined benefit pension plans, and it's not the only retirement cost that we have, we also have defined contribution plans. And if you recall, uh, over the last decade, we've closed all our defined benefit pension plans to all of our new hires. So what's happening is the people that are our defined contribution plan, plans, that number is growing. And you'll see that not only are, you know, do we have concerns over about our defined benefit pension plan increases, but at the same time, our defined contribution plan contributions are also growing, because everybody that we hire going forward is in those defined contribution plans. So there's, there's other pension increases that compound what, what we're experiencing here with the, uh, defined benefit pension plan.
Thank, thank you, Jim. Uh, what I was going to say is, obviously, we're in unprecedented times with this COVID-nineteen issue. And our taxpayers are seeing, you know, hits like they've not seen probably ever. And from a budgetary perspective, at least from my, my standpoint, we need to be working really hard to keep whatever increases we have here on the backs of our taxpayers minimal, if any at all. And so I'm hopeful that this year can be a bit of an anomaly when it comes to our auditors and whoever else is looking at this stuff, understanding that this is a year that could be very different than most. We have a great track record, as is evidenced by how long we've had such a high, uh, bond rating of, of doing things prudently. And so I guess I'm just asking all of us to think about this year as something a little bit different than normal, because I'm really concerned about the impact to our taxpayers this year in light of what's transpiring. And so I know I'm going to be looking at this budget very differently this year than maybe in the past, just because I'm not looking to add to any further burden that our taxpayers are already dealing with in light of this pandemic. So, uh, I guess that's just an overreaching, overarching kind of a statement that I'm looking to make.
Point well taken, and I, I, I think that, you know, this doesn't come at a, at a good time, in light of COVID, uh, situation. And, uh, you know, for that matter, I, I think when we were putting the budget together, we had no idea that a month later we'd be where we are today. Point well taken.
I mean, even the Board of Ed, look what's transpired since they've done their budget, I mean, it seems like the world changed dramatically. So, you know, I'm sure we're going to have to be collaborating with them as well, uh, about what's going on within their budget. And, you know, I'm certainly going to be very anxious to hear from both sides of the street what kind of savings, if any, that we're going to be seeing. I'm sure they're going to be fairly significant in certain areas. Now, I'm not sure what extra expenses we have because of the pandemic, but I'm sure there are a fair amount of, uh, savings on both sides of the street that I'm hoping we can capture and pass along to the taxpayers as best we can in this forward-looking budget.
Well, it, uh, Rob, I, I couldn't agree more, and I have to tell you that, that, that sentiment is what I expressed to the town manager last week, that I think we've got an un, an unprecedented, unusual circumstance. And normally, in a normal year where everybody's working and there isn't a high unemployment, e- even if it's temporary, we may be looking at, uh, some kind of a tax increases to keep services, but, uh, I personally am looking at this, trying to get a, as minimal impact to the taxpayers as possible. And there may be projects that have to get pushed off on a temporary basis and, and moved down the lane. There may be expenses that have to get pushed off in order to, uh, accommodate, uh, uh, what are, what I believe our constituents are going to need. And that is to have as minimal, if any, increase, uh, in the tax burden put on them by the municipality. I don't see any hands up, and I'm flipping back and forth, so I can see everybody, and, uh, then I guess, Jim, I'll ask you to continue on.
Okay. Well, you know, I, I think that's about all I had for the, the pension piece. You know, I'll, I'll just say, I think the overall increase in defined contribution plan contributions was, uh, a little, about thirty thousand dollars, if I recall, uh, just to give you some perspective on that.
And that's generally going to be a function of the increase in payroll, for the most part, because we've probably got most of the people on there, so.
So do you want to go to, if, if anyone's good on pension, we can move to, uh, either health insurance or, or to heart and hypertension? Maybe start with health insurance, if that works? All right.
Sure, Jim.
Okay, you want to, do you want to lead off on this, or do you want me to just kind of dive in?
Maybe we could both, uh, kind of jump in on this one, uh, Sean, there's, there's a schedule of, uh, uh, a medical trust fund, I think, uh, you might have in, in that folder.
I do, yep, it's coming right now.
So maybe I, I can just s- start a little bit, uh, I know, you know, we always kind of take a, a good look in, in, you know, obviously, we don't have to make any decisions tonight, and as we get more history in the next month or two. But so far, we haven't had a really good year, uh, as far as our experience goes. This, this summary, uh, shows, uh, a variance from our expected claims of, uh, to date totaling, four-hundred-and-thirty-seven thousand and change.
If I could just jump in real quick?
Yeah.
Um, and just for the benefit, I'm just always cognizant, there's some folks that haven't been through the budget here yet before. So, um, just very simply, uh, we are what's called a self-funded insurance program, and I know you probably read through that in the books, but, uh, we, uh, effectively pay our own, uh, claims. We have, obviously, it's administered by, um, Cigna in this case, as our health insurance provider, but, uh, we, we maintain a medical trust fund, um, with a, with a balance. Um, and then every year, we, we try to budget the appropriate amount of contributions between both the employer and the employee, uh, to offset the expected and projected claims, which of course, jump around a little bit, there's also stop-loss insurance for any very large, uh, significant, bad experiences, but I just want to throw that out there, so when you see some of this, you'll see expected, uh, contributions and what we plan to budget, uh, and, and pay for. Also, the reliance on fund balance, which we've done in some past years, kind of using some of that fund balances, it's gotten higher to kind of mitigate some of those annual increases. So just a little context for those folks that are following along.
So, I, I'll just kind of quickly say, we use these spreadsheets more for internal purposes, but because we were relying a little bit on, on the fund balance in the fiscal year we are in right now, that four-hundred-and-thirty-seven thousand dollar variance, coupled with the fact that we are using, uh, some of our fund balance to, uh, come up with the, uh, contributions to the fund this year, the decrease to date in our medical reserve fund is actually the six-hundred-and-seventy-two thousand, and I don't know, Sean, you can kind of point to that. And, uh, so, so that's actually how much, uh, our fund has decreased this year so far. Mostly because of the claims, but also because we've been using a little bit of our reserve that was planned. And, uh, we do have on the flip side, uh, some receivables for stop-loss insurance. So that's going to bring the number back up to, uh, five-hundred-and-seventy-seven thousand approximately.
And Jim, this is on the town side.
Unfavorable variance this year, that's how much at this point, uh, for the, uh, eight months that are shown here, how much our, uh, medical reserve on the town side decreased. So if we go down to the next slide, uh, we can see the exact same thing for the Board of Ed. They've had pretty similar experience, only their, their piece is, is a little larger than ours. They're showing a seven-hundred-and-fifty-four thousand dollar, uh, unfavorable variance from projections. But again, they used even a larger portion of their trust fund balance, so that there are actually, uh, a decrease right now of one-point-five million, noting that there are stop-loss claims, uh, that we expect to recuperate. But for the eight months, uh, there's a decrease of, uh, almost one-point-four million on their side. So, uh, again, it's, uh, not a good situation, uh, for, for, as far as the health of our, our reserves. If you go to the next slide, you can kind of get a little bit better idea of where, um, some of these, if, if, if the trend continues, this is the, uh, the, the town piece. And we've, in the upper right-hand corner, that was our trust fund balance for the town side at the beginning of the year. And then, and then at the very bottom of this spreadsheet, we show under different scenarios, there's five different ways we've, we've come up with ways to project, uh, how much, uh, expense will incur by the end of the year. And in the lower left-hand corner is, is an average of that. And so that's, that's the balance, uh, that, that we would expect, if things continue, uh, based on the trend we've seen so far for the eight months.
And for just a little more context there, you'll see this three-point-six months worth of claims, which is what that. And for just a little more context there, you'll see this 3.6 months worth of claims, which is what that balance equates to. Historically, benefit advisors have advised that you be between three to six months of paid claims. Again, part of the, part of the thinking there is, of course, to have a buffer for a particularly bad year. The other part of the thinking is, is you think about it in terms of if we ever went from being self-funded to fully insured, the, the idea is that you need to have enough. So if somebody incurred a claim on June 28th, that's going to run out over the following, what really used to be, you know, one to two to three months. And just to be sure, in terms of how, how quick a, a claim is processed. In a lot of our conversations with our benefit advisor now, some of that guidance has changed in terms of where that number needs to be, because claims are paid so much faster now through electronic means versus maybe 10 or 15 years ago. That's not to say that, you know, we can go all the way down to one or two months, but because they do pay claims within about six weeks, some of that, you need to have six months guidance is, is, is kind of been lessened. But just so you know, we, we kind of started this fiscal year, I believe, Jim, with right around five, right around five months.
I think it was actually closer to six months.
Like five and a, it was like five and a half or six months. And so you'll see that we're projected to be around three and a half unless things turn around in the, in the last few months of the fiscal year.
So. Marry question? Dave?
Sure. Yes. Yeah, Rob.
A couple of things, Jim, or Sean. It looks like you're using $250,000 of trust fund balance in this budget. Is that correct, Sean?
Yes, that's correct.
And 60,000 from the VBA, correct?
Yeah, that one's a little confusing.
The budget.
Right. The VBA, we make a $60,000 contribution elsewhere in the budget. So it's sort of a, a net, we're basically paying as you go on those police retirees. Yes.
But, but in light of what we're seeing, are you still comfortable using $250,000 of this?
Yeah. So there's a couple of things. I was, I was more comfortable a month and a half ago when we were doing this. We hadn't had the last month, we hadn't had March claims yet, which was, which was not a role, and actually even really February claims when we were putting it together, those, those two months aren't looking very good. So yeah, the short version is, I think I'm less comfortable with that full amount. Our, our benefit advisor at the time certainly blessed it as, as, as a, as an amount that he was comfortable with, again, based on the amount that you kind of need to hold in trust. But again, from our perspective, it's not just that, it's also this ability to smooth a bad year, right? And we've had good years. We've had good, we've had a number of years where, you know, Cheshire hasn't had great increases really, because we've had such good years. You know, the challenge is, do they come in pairs? Do you have a bad year followed by another bad year? That's really the consideration that we're kind of grappling with, because ultimately, the claims are the claims. You know, we've, we've been, we launched a very robust wellness program this year in collaboration with the Board of Education. And, and I'm, I'm optimistic that that's going to start, you know, turning some of the bad claims around. Obviously, you can't predict some of the major claims, and we have stop-loss insurance for them. But certainly, if we can get utilization more under control and prevent some of the large claims from hitting, that would go a long way. The other piece is, we are getting, we have some more information that we'll be sharing with the council soon, really just as of a couple of days ago. Part of this switch to Cigna includes, previously, we were with Anthem. This year with Cigna, we have some better rebate numbers, it looks like, than, than we anticipated. So there's some numbers that are not included in these charts, and Jim, correct me if I'm wrong. We are getting, I believe, around $150,000 worth of drug rebates coming soon that are not in this, this current.
And then we didn't have any experience with this new company on that. So that going forward, I think it's, it's a reasonable assumption that if we're going to expect that kind of money this year, that, that we could build that into our budget projections for next year as well.
Yeah. So I mean, normally, maybe without these bad months, Rob, in answer to your question, less comfortable with the 250, although if we apply the logic that some of that 150 coming back could help offset that, maybe that's something we can do. But we'll, we'll make sure we have that information out for you guys to consider.
Okay. And I, I have two hopefully quick follow-ups to that. Can we get an update either from Superintendent Sol or Mr. Maciana on the Board of Ed side? I, I don't recall what they did relative to their trust fund contributions. So, so can we get an update on that?
Sure. I, I can give that update. I was kind of waiting for my turn here. Hi, everyone. Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Good evening, Vince.
Great. I don't have a chart to put up, but I'll, I'll talk it through. Our story is similar on, than, on the town side. We did have quite a few large claims this year. We were projecting average claims monthly to be about $750,000. This year, we're running 869,000 per month. So the effect is our trust fund balance went from 3.7 million when we started the year, which was almost five months' worth of claims balance. And as of February 29th, we're down to about 2.5 million. So we're somewhere around three months' worth of claims in reserve. So it's not terrible, because we've been between two and three months in the past, it's certainly lower. You know, what our concern is, you know, we do expect that some of these large claims will continue through the rest of this year based on the circumstances of the employees or their spouses. So we may decrease our trust fund balance a little more, and I'm not sure what the impact of COVID will be. As far as what we did in the budget for 2020-21, the board did approve $350,000 as an increase to the medical benefits line. So just round numbers, that'll give us about $731,000 per month towards claims. You know, we've been running this year 869, and I'm hoping we don't see that experience again next year, because then that'll really tap the trust fund balance, you know, down very, very quickly. So we have an increase. If claims subside and we don't get hit with anything dramatic from COVID, we might be okay next year, but I, I think we have a risk in that number. And, you know, as we get through the rest of this budget cycle, we may know a little bit more. I only have claims through February, but we will get March claims. Actually, I believe, you know, we might have gotten them already on Friday, so I'll, I'll take a look for that. So by the time the Board of Ed comes in front of the council at the end of April, we should have a little bit more insight. But that's kind of a thumbnail overview of where we are.
Thank you, Peter. Do you mind if I ask my last question before we go to you? The, the last piece that I just want to throw out there is, I think I had mentioned this to the group a, a month or two ago. I've been hearing and reading a little bit about these medical concierge services that are being set up where you hire a consultant, if you will, or this concierge service, particularly for groups like us where we're so heavily self-insured and we have such big exposure on a monthly basis, where this concierge service helps employees who are going through various medical scenarios where to find the most cost-effective scenarios, obviously without, you know, hurting the quality of their care. But depending on whether they go to a tier one or a tier two provider, depending on the kind of service they're pursuing, whether it just be a basic blood draw, or it could be something even more, you know, serious like a, a, a cancer situation. But nonetheless, I've heard real positive results of this kind of a situation, saving private sector companies enormous amount of money by having this concierge service available to kind of educate and walk the path with our employee, employees as they're going through these medical scenarios, to help them find the most cost-effective way to gain the, the services that they need. Is anybody aware of that other than me, me being used anywhere? Have we looked into it? It sounded like one of our consultants was somewhat familiar with it being rolled out, but I'm just curious, is this something we should be looking into?
Yeah, I can jump in on that. We, we have had some additional conversations with, I don't have the information at my fingertips right now, but I know there's been some conversations looking into that further. And I know that Lou has some of that, Dish Door Consultant, who I know was, was putting something together. So I think we should have some more information on that at a future meeting.
Thank you.
I think you brought that up at our last budget cycle. I remember that conversation then, I think.
Correct. And I, and I'm seeing that it's, you know, I, I know of one particular case where a, a certain company is doing it, and I've heard very positive results from the few people that have hired them for these services. I'm not quite sure how effective it would be here, but obviously, this is a huge expenditure for both the Board of Ed and the town. And anywhere we can find a way to, number one, help improve the quality of benefits and services all of our employees get, and also save the community money, it's certainly worth looking into.
Definitely.
Yeah, absolutely. Peter, did I hear you had a question or comment?
I did. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Vin, you actually triggered something while you were speaking. You, you mentioned you weren't aware of, you know, what the, what the kind of the COVID claims would look like. The question then is, is any of the, the COVID-related stuff, would that be reimbursable in any way, shape or form?
I don't know. I don't know. You're talking about some type of a federal government subsidy that would be provided, you know, to us or, you know, through Cigna. I'm not aware of anything specific yet, Peter. You know, I know that all the insurance companies, I'm sure everybody, you know, that's, that's on this Zoom and, and might be listening that, you know, we, you know, employers have to cover COVID-related testing or expenses, you know, as part of their medical benefit plan, which we're doing. Whether or not that's covered through FEMA reimbursement or something else, will, it remains to be seen. I, you know, I think it's fair to say a lot of things have been enacted, either legislatively or through executive order, without a lot of detail. So, you know, we're trying to, you know, gain information. And as we do, we'll incorporate that into, you know, our discussions or our budget. But I'm not aware of anything specific yet, Peter, but we'll keep our eyes open.
Thanks, Vin. My, my original question though is for Sean, and if Sean, you could put up the, the, the towns, the look at the town monthly claims. What I thought I noticed was that during this fiscal year, we had two of, two of the highest months that we've had in four years. I think it was October. Yeah, October, the 473 in October, and then the 503 in February. Those are the highest that we've seen in four years. Was, was there anything specific that you can, you know, kind of relate to those numbers?
And, and maybe I could just chime in. I think I have to believe that one or both of those might pertain to some of those stop-loss claims, because I know we did have several very large medical expenses for individuals. That's about all I can tell you on that.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Other questions or comments, or I don't see anybody else. Are, are we ready to move on? All right. Thank you.
Sean, I don't know, maybe heart and hypertension, workers comp to, just since.
Keep everyone awake.
The, the bigger ticket items in employee benefits, that's probably the next.
All right. So let's start with heart, heart and hypertension. Do you want to give a quick recap as to what it is, Jim, or do you want me to do that?
Yeah, all I could tell you is it's a statutory compensation for police officers, I, I believe, who are retired. Some under disability, some not, based on hypertension issues they might experience. And I, I don't know, you know, the criteria exactly what would qualify, but we do currently pay out about $450,000 a year on our heart and hypertension fund. It's a big number. Actually, this year, I'm projecting 475,000, as you can see in footnote one on this, this chart.
It's probably worth mentioning now, if it just, so if folks want to follow along in the, in the detailed budget book, for those that have it, that's the horizontal one. This line item, it's, it's one specific line item on page 48 of that book, if you have your books. And as, as Jim is saying, we, under, under the overall depart, account of, of workers' compensation, there is this other category, which is specific to heart and hypertension claims. And when an officer makes a, an eligible officer makes that claim under that program, which is, you know, since been discontinued, but there are still active officers that qualify, they, you have an opportunity at the time, and it's usually advised for some of the situations like one we're facing here, where you try to settle out those claims early on before there's potential down, downstream medical, because at the end, you own all those medical expenses under the way that legislation was written. And Cheshire unfortunately has one of those situations where we have almost all of this budgetary line on it. And then again, it's a huge item at almost $400,000 is really due to, due to one, one claim. So Jim, do you want to, I, I think I.
The only thing I can add on this, this, I just wanted to show the history of our, our cash balance in this fund. And you can see it's, we've been under-budgeting the projected expense each year for over a half a dozen years now. And, you know, we've, we've been on that track. So my point here is, you know, we've been relying on the balance that we had built up in this fund since inception, and I don't know how far back that goes. But in recent years, it has declined significantly because, predominantly because we have one claim that, that has, has cost us an inordinate amount. But, but as you could see, I'm projecting that if, if we proceed with what Sean put in the budget for '21, the reserve in this account will, will continue to decrease to a point where we might not be able to do that as much or at all going forward. And I just wanted to bring that to your attention. I think we're good, you know, for fiscal '21. Can you use it even a little bit more? I suppose you could, but, you know, I think we probably want to keep a little money in this reserve in case there are new claims that come on board or potential for settling a claim if that ends up being perceived as, as cost-effective over the long term. Sean, I don't know if there's anything else to add on that.
No, I think just that, I mean, as compared to the other trust fund we were just looking at, this one kind of only goes in one direction unless we, because we're not actively putting any additional dollars. I saw less until, I guess, the, that, especially that one large claimant maybe has a, has a year that their, their expenses are not as high. It's been pretty consistent.
Yes.
Yes, Rob, Mr. Horace.
But, but the issue here clearly is that, you know, we're, we're eroding this account every year. And two years out maximum, we're not going to be able to erode it any further, and it's just going to be another spike in the budget.
Exactly.
So, you know, this is another one we've got to deal with sooner than later. And, and that's assuming, as Jim said, we don't have any, any other additional claims against this. I mean, we really have, at the 475, you're eroding this by what, about $85,000? This year between what's, what your 475 is and what you're requesting in the budget, Sean, what are you requesting?
Yeah, it's either, I put 390 in the budget, and I think our estimates are around, yeah, 475, 480, so it's roughly 90,000.
So that balance is what, 100, and I didn't, can't see it now, but 150, 160,000. So we got two years maximum left, and then we've got nothing, assuming no additional claims. So this is another one I think we've got to be careful on.
Yep. No, no disagreement.
All right. Well, you're currently at 236, not 146. So, so you're assuming at the end of this budget, you'll be at 146 with a, a cash balance?
That's correct. Yeah, that is the 9,000 that's assumed there. But yes, it's, it's, it's unfortunately one of those things that we've, we've been kind of relying on this, on this fund for a number of years. And now we're, we're kind of to the end of it, unless something significantly changes either on the funding side or on the claim expense side.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
I have a question, if I could jump in?
Sure. Yes.
Is, is, is this the kind of thing where we could tap in if, if we were to get a, a number of claims at one time where we exhaust this balance? Do we have some sort of a stop-loss insurance on this kind of a fund, or does that not factor in?
Nope. No, you really don't. So these are excluded from, so Kerma, for instance, is our insurance company. insurance company for workers' comp. They they manage your claim, but the way they set these up for towns, they're not responsible ultimately. You have to you have to pay whatever they go. So they help negotiate with a claimant, for instance, and they'll come to you. And I'm sure it's happened. It hasn't happened in my time here with the town council, but I'm sure you from time to time, you're presented with a settlement offer for a heart and hypertension claim. And usually what you're trying to do there is you're settling with someone who maybe has a 5% rating, a 10% rating, maybe they have a high blood pressure or something. You know, what you're trying to avoid is what we're experiencing here. Obviously, for HIPAA reasons, I can't give you a lot of details, but
Sure.
if that turns into a really significant medical claim, the way that law was written, the town is responsible as the employer for the entire expenses, all those.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Jim. Are there other questions or comments? I don't see any scrolling around. Okay. Jim or Sean?
Sean, the only other thing I wanted to mention is our workers' comp insurance is is got a 0% increase, which I was pretty happy with because we have had claims several claims this past year and in recent years. But that's a $414,000 budget item that is not increasing. So at least that came in relatively good. And in employee benefits in general, I mean, there's some other big items here, but kind of fixed, for example, social security is a is 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 merely a mathematical exercise based on our our payroll. There's unemployment compensation, which the pound pays for directly also our claims. So it's not like the town pays into a fund that then pays our unemployment claims. We we pay those claims directly. I've included in this budget amounts that were projections based on our our history in recent years. You know, with with COVID, I don't know if that situation will change going forward. And I don't know if we'll have more information before the budget is done, but I just want to let you know that that's that's what's here was based on our historical payouts. There's a few other small items in employee benefits. Some early retirement incentives for a couple of the unions, but they're and and some miscellaneous items that I I think in general are are probably not worth the time. There were no significant changes in a lot of those items.
But if any So maybe if I could jump in, Jim, I think, and again, trying to recognize where we are with time. I mean, there there are obviously, we had kind of a lot we were going to try to cover in one night. And I know also with this new format, this is maybe a challenge. So I think a couple of things that maybe before we move on, and I want to make sure folks have a chance to ask some questions, whether on the presentation or on what we've been covering now. But I know that on the revenue side, Jim, you want to talk a little bit about the investment assumptions. And and again, this is again, something that's changed
Yeah, I guess, you know,
Last month or so.
Since revenue is a topic for tonight, I I think I just want to touch on a just a couple of the the key ones that I think are something we need to keep our eye on, one of them being our investment income. Last year, or actually the year we're in now, we we had a budget of $900,000 for investment income. And that was based on a average 2.45% rate of return on our investments. When when I last looked at this, when we were doing the budget, based on three Federal Reserve decreases, quarter point decreases this year, we we're now projecting a mere 1.4% rate of return going forward. And I think in in my last quarterly financial update, I I mentioned that we're probably going to come in significantly under budget this year against that $900,000 investment income appropriation. We put a figure in of 540,000 this year in investment income revenue.
If folks want to follow along, you can on the on the big book, the vertical one, page 111 is the is the revenue section on this, just so you can see what we budgeted and how dramatically it's kind of changed over just 12 to 18 months.
But just so I could, you know, tell you, we we budgeted 540,000. That was based on a 1.4%. So we we kind of looked at, you know, what we're earning like right now or were about a month ago. And I'm, you know, I'm even concerned at that at this point. As of today, STIF, which is the State Treasurers Investment Fund, where we have a large part of our liquid cash invested, is only returning 0.89%. So it's a significant decrease, even from what we were using when we were putting in this $540,000 appropriation. You know, I I will say that we do invest in longer term CDs to try to mitigate some of the short term investments we have, but we have to be careful there too, because we need funds throughout the year, you know, for payroll and everything else. But anything that we can invest a little bit longer, for example, our $9 million, $10 million fund balance, we certainly try to push that out into some longer term CDs that we're allowed to take advantage of based on state statutes.
So, oh, Mr. Horace.
Jim, I I know this isn't revenue, but it kind of jogged my memory. I know we did a lot of refinances to low interest rates, but rates are even lower now. Is there are there any places for us to continue to do refinancings to save the community now? It can't be a better time to refinance. And again, you've done a phenomenal job with you and your staff doing that. But it it we should certainly look at it again in light of where we are with interest rates.
Yeah, this kind of came up a couple of times over the last few months. And the problem is, we don't have any obligations that are coming close to their call date. And under some new tax legislation that was adopted by the federal government a couple of years ago, we can't take advantage of any advance refundings anymore. But certainly we can take still advantage of refundings as we get closer to those call dates. And considering the interest rates have dropped as precipitously as they have, I think, you know, there is potential that we might be able to get into a situation where we could take advantage of that. I just don't know. Right now, we haven't reached that point. And I spoke to our financial advisor just a couple of weeks ago about that. But it's something certainly keeping our eye on in case anything materializes.
Thank you, Jim. I know you and Gina and staff do a great job at overseeing that. So appreciate your hard work. Thanks.
Thanks.
Mr. Velver?
Rob, thanks for bringing that up because that was a question I was going to have as well on the on the possible refinancing. So Jim, I'm glad you're able to address that. Now, you're saying not at the moment, but I guess what is the potential on those call dates? I mean, you know, is, you know, it's one thing to have it say, well, it's it's coming up in a month or two, but are we talking a year from now, two years from now before those things come?
I think I'm going to add that on my list of things to follow up on because I I don't, I'm not real comfortable giving the answer on that tonight. So I will certainly reach out to our financial advisor and get get some information on that.
Okay, thank you. Because I mean, it's a big difference if these are coming due in, you know, three, four months or sometime in the next, you know, this upcoming fiscal year versus they're not coming due for a while because interest rates, although probably we would expect may stay low probably going forward. They've been low historically over the last few years, and we're probably, they're not going to climb significantly. But right now, we're in we're in a really good spot. And so six months from now, maybe those rates aren't really as good for us now versus what we're already getting. So obviously, the sooner if we can get to them before that timeframe, then the economic changes occur, you know, obviously, that's a big, that could have a big difference over the course of the next year. So
I'll try to get some a little more back background on that.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then I don't see anybody else with a question or comment, but I have one. And I I want to say that I think this is a very big number and an important number that we're going to need an update from you, Sean and Jim, as we do our deliberations, because you're certainly not going to receive the revenue where you expected for this year, which is going to have implications for what can roll over. But you're also going to know at least the beginning part of the next fiscal year is going to be lower that we're going to collect as well. And this is a big number that's going to have a big impact on what we decide.
Yeah, no, absolutely. And and it was sort of, as we were preparing the budget in February, it was painful enough to have to absorb $60,000 mill rate impact, just to get to where we were, of course. And then now to have the bottom fall out, we probably need to go at least another half of that, maybe 200, 200, $250,000 based on where the interest rates are. So
Yeah, unfortunately, yes. Mr. Horace?
Yes, Jim, on the revenue source, obviously, our budget increase is supported by mill rate, the grand list growth and other revenue sources, which we're talking about. Clearly, mill rate adjustment, we know what that is. Can you give us a little more detail on the grand list growth? It may be in the book. I didn't get to it yet, but is
Yeah, there's actually a a chart in the in the summary book.
And does it include the potential for these economic incentives that we're providing to various property owners, you know, for those that either new property or expansions, things of that nature? I just want to understand that we're thinking about the potential, even though we have grand list growth, we may not get 100% of that day one.
Take all of that into consideration. So that I'm comfortable with. But there is a summary in in Sean's transmittal, I believe.
Okay, I probably just didn't get to it yet, Jim. Thank you. No need to The the last item is the other revenue sources is the we're we're losing $539,000. Is the majority of that the investment? Investment income you just referenced?
Yes, the majority is.
Okay.
And
Because it looks like we're we're last year, we had other revenue increases of 710,000. This year, we're losing budgetary wise 539.
My recollection, there were some some smaller grants, I I I believe, and there were decreases, but I'll try to try to get a better summary of of what's driving that additional decrease.
Okay, thank you, Jim.
All right. I don't see anybody else with some other questions. So if we can move on.
So the only other thing on revenues that I might want to just remind everyone that I think is significant is our tax collections. And as you know, for the past five years, we've had excellent tax collection rate here at Cheshire, 99.7 or better. And we only budget a 99.2% collection rate. That served us well because it has fortified our surplus year over year. And the the only thing I I want to caution everyone this year, and especially with the COVID considerations that, you know, we'll probably talk more about tomorrow night, because there's a deferment program out there and a lower interest rate program. But even at that, I think the collections this year are showing some signs of being a little bit more sluggish than they have in recent years. And so, you know, I I wouldn't be surprised if if we didn't hit our 99.7. I think there's a realistic chance that we might only hit 99 99 point five or point six. And I'll trying to get some better numbers on that. And when I update everyone in my quarterly report in a couple of weeks, you know, that's that's a this year situation. As far as COVID in 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 next year, I guess it's it's anybody's guess what impact that might have in the long term.
But I think regarding that, Jim, we're going to want your recommendation or your guidance, along with Sean, of course, as to what you think the impact would be with the options that we have from the state.
Right. So point well taken, and I'm sure we'll be looking at revenues again before before these budget deliberations are over. And you know, I'll have a better idea, I think, about, you know, what options the town's going to choose going forward in the way of some of the tax incentives that might provide some relief for for the COVID circumstances that we're we're under right now. I, you know, I think in general, our state grants are are pretty much par for what they were a year ago. So there wasn't, as Sean mentioned in his overview, there weren't any increases. I think if anything, we had a very small decrease on our state grants. And our departmental revenues are also pretty flat year over year. If anybody has any specific questions about any specific revenue line items, department revenue line items, just, you know, let me know and I'll see if I can find some more details.
Jim?
Sure.
It's Tim. Sorry, I know it shows up on everyone's screen. I don't know how to wave, and that doesn't happen. Here's your question. It's not a question, but I think you guys need to be basically making projections on the current reductions in revenue. Clearly, the pool is underwater. Anything else we're doing is underwater. You're going to probably have three months of library, everything. It's just gone. And I think we need to see those numbers because that's just like the lowered interest rate.
That's a good point. And and you know, that's that's going to affect our surplus this year.
There's just no question.
And, you know, potentially, we we might be able to use for surplus in in this budget.
So
And I I will get some updates on on projections for those.
Yeah, even if we use the what we achieved in these months last year, you know, as a as a guide. So I I think that would be reasonable enough.
Yeah.
Without even asking your department heads.
Right.
We'll definitely be doing that. So Dave, again, I I I don't know what you would like us to. We have a number of things we could cover tonight. I just want to be respectful of everyone's time, too. We have some departments, whether it's finance and and tax and assessors, we could also reschedule those for another night. What with any of the other, because usually we also have the budget and others that we can go through, too.
Yeah, let me ask everybody. I see on the agenda that we still had plans to do general services and administration and finance. I don't know if we can do either of those in, say, the next half hour so that we're not running too late and losing our attention span and ability to absorb a lot of information here. Anybody disagree with that? Try to soldier through for a little while longer.
Yeah, I'm good with it. But I I think just generally, we've generally tried to keep these to two hours just to respect it was his attention span. I mean, we've gone over on occasion. So, you know, I don't know how everybody else feels, but I would love to try to keep it to two hours, except on some rare occasions. I'm good with finishing up tonight another half hour. But, you know, I think if we're going three hours every meeting, it's going to get a lot for everybody.
Right. Okay, well, then can we finish one of those two, general services or administration and finance in a little while? And then then we'll save the other one that you don't get done, you know, for another night.
I think finance is probably good. I know it's kind of the Jim Jaskott show here, but I
Yeah, this this could go pretty quickly because, you know, frankly, I I think a lot of these budgets were pretty flat. So
Do you want to give us a page number?
Wants to follow in your budget detail books. The the first vision is 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 the financial office, accounting and treasury, looked on page 11 and 22. In if you go to the very end on page 22, you could see
Let me, Jim. The first line says, town council total salary zero. Is that a mistake?
It must be a typo somewhere.
I thought we were getting a raise this year.
Didn't you put in for double? Yeah.
Nobody tells me you're still paying this.
No, we did. We doubled it. We doubled.
Just a little smoke, that's all.
Hey, what page did you?
Hey, what page did you mention, Jim?
Twenty one and twenty two, and I'm in the, the, the smaller book which shows the detail. So, so accounting and treasury again, page twenty one and twenty two. There's an overall decrease year over year of point oh two percent. It's virtually flat. And can everybody hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay.
Yes.
You know, I, I think there, there really wasn't much change here at all and even the. The salary. Piece of it was relatively flat. I know we had some turnover in the office with one of our part timers. So we have. On board at a first step in the union, which mitigated any projected increases for salaries. So. Accounting and treasury, I, I, I don't really have too much to talk about unless anybody has any questions.
Looks like you're ready to go on to the next one.
Okay, I mean, I mean, several of these are going to be pretty much the same situation. The tax collector or the collector of revenue office, which is page twenty three and twenty four. That had an overall seven point two five percent increase. The underlying reason for that is the prior year. Appropriation for the year that we're in now. Made an assumption that. A new hire in the tax office was going to come in at step one. But what happened was one of the other offices, one of the other employees who worked in the town clerk's office. Transferred to the tax office, so they retained their union step. I think it was a step four. And it, and it came in higher than what was budgeted for in this department. But if you go, so, so what's happening here is we're showing an overall eight point two six percent increase. In personnel services, but if you go to the town clerk budget. You're going to see a five percent decrease in their budget. Because they were assuming that that. Person would, would be remaining in their office and indeed they transferred. So I think when you look at this tax budget. You've got to look at both the town clerk and the tax office. And look at the combined increase overall, which I think is much more reasonable in the two to three percent range. The town clerk. Is. On page. Eleven. You can see a five point zero six percent decrease. In, in their overall personnel services. And again, it's because. When, when the budgets were adopted last year, it was assumed that the person in this office was going to stay in this office. I don't, I don't know if I said that clear enough, but. The, the reason why the tax office increased is because we under budgeted. For, for the person that ultimately came into that office from a union transfer.
So essentially, it's a trade off.
Exactly.
All right.
Other than that, again, the. Expenses and if anybody has any questions on anything in particular, I think year over year, they were. Pretty, pretty much right in line. With relatively minimal increase, if any.
Jim, hold on, I just, I just muted you there. Question.
I'm sorry, okay, so.
Hold on, Jim, I'm trying to. I think we're trying to get a question in.
Yeah, I, I saw Mr. Velver had a question.
Jim, two quick questions. First, when it comes to the transition from the town clerk's office to the, the. The tax office, you said we predicted that the, projected the person was going to have. You know, come in sort of as a, as a level one, you know, and obviously that person comes in as a, at a step four and. So therefore it's a much higher expense than we had anticipated, correct?
Right, but a much lower expense on the town clerk side.
Right, so, but we, there's no control over who can take that spot in the town clerks in the, in the office. To say, wait, we don't want to, we, we want somebody to come in, but we don't want to pay them at a step four. We were hoping to pay, find someone at step one. There's no control over that. It can fill in that under the union rules, like, you know, do we, you know. Does that person have to come in? Or can you say, no, we, we budgeted this as a step one position and so we only want to fill it with a step one position?
No, the short version is if they're both represented by the same bargaining unit, then they have. It's, it's a lateral shift within their grade. Under those agreements, they would stay where they are. So effectively what happened is that entry level, if you will, position, the one that was. To be started at step one, ultimately was filled. It was just filled across the hall.
Right.
But there's no control.
No code. And then so my next question is when we're looking at this, do we think that the town clerk's office now needs someone to fill that position? That, that was vacated by that person moving and so will their budget potentially have to go up to fill that?
No, it was filled. It was filled by, by somebody starting at step one. And so they have the same, they have a full staff of what they had budgeted this year.
Okay, okay, so what, what the hope that we got, the hope of savings that came from the tax office by bringing in a step one. Is being achieved in the town clerk's office by that being filled by a, a step one person there. So we still have one step one and one step. Four, so it's really just a break even or we ended up trying to. Okay, thanks, Greg.
Okay, moving on to the assessor's office, which is page twenty five, twenty six. Assessor's office had an overall four point five two percent increase. And, and again, I, I, I think, you know, it's a little higher increase than I might expect. But I know last year our appropriations took into consideration that we had. Vacancy in that office. For our assessor for a part of that year. So that I, I think, you know, the. The percentage increases is kind of skewed by the fact that we didn't have a full year of. Projected salaries in, in, in this fiscal twenty. I'll just add that, you know. We still have a vacancy in our. Assessor office right now. We've been running for several months with the. With a acting assessor. And we're going to have to make some decisions going forward. To fill that position at some point. Sean, I don't know if you want to add anything on regards to the assessor's office, but.
No, I think you, I mean, you summarized it pretty well. I think, yeah, ultimately that, that vacancy became. How do you say, I guess, kind of more permanent right around the time this budget was being put together. So we anticipated filling that position, but obviously we're in a holding pattern. Not, not in a position to hire anyone right now, as we just try to reassess how we're going to handle this going forward.
Yep. Moving right along. The audit division on page twenty seven. We just finished the fifth year of a five year contract and I've got a draft RFP. Hoping to get it out in the next week or so. We will be bidding this out this year, so. We, we, you know, pretty much put a placeholder in based on prior year. And hopefully, hopefully we can maintain that, that level. And I don't know if anybody has any questions on that, but. Hopefully, over the next month, we may have more information on, on how that is falling out, but I don't expect any big variances. General insurance on page twenty eight. Has a pretty big increase, twelve point two four percent. And this is a, this is a half a million dollar number, so. I hope to get back to the council before these deliberations are over. Our agent. Our consultants are bidding out a lot of our insurances this year. I will say that I think nationwide. There's been large increases in general liability insurance and. You know, I'm, I'm hoping I can come back with, with a better number before this is all over, but. I think what we put in right now is fair based on what we've been told. And I'm kind of flying through this, but if any, anybody has questions. If for tech, information technology starts on page twenty nine.
Hey, Jim, can I just jump in for a minute to go back to the insurance? I mean, those line items have gone, it's gone up twenty five percent in two years. I mean, I, I understand insurance is going up, but that, that just seems ridiculous. I mean, do we have the right broker?
Yeah. Sean and I both concerned about that. We, we got quite a bit of detail explaining why there's such. Increases, especially projected for next year, and maybe that's something I can share with the council. Get it out.
I just think we need a better understanding of why this line item consistently in the last two years and we started at four hundred and six thousand in nineteen. Went to four thirty five that we appropriated. We actually spent four fifty seven. And so we've absolutely gone up a hundred thousand dollars in two years out of a hundred thousand dollar line item.
Yep.
Seems absurd to me and, you know, I don't know who our broker is, but it seems to me that. Our taxpayers deserve an answer as to why we're going up that significantly.
Yep. I, again, I, I hope I have better numbers before this is over. I, I spent like a week, last week, filling out insurance applications. To get some other quotes on this and hoping, hopefully we can knock that number down.
Well, how, how often do we use, I mean, the broker is the one that's driving where we go for these quotes, correct?
Right.
Have we considered pursuing another broker or talking to another broker? How long have we had this broker?
It's, it's been for some time. We have bid that service out, I think, several years ago. So it is something that we bid out on a regular basis.
I just want to make sure, and again, I'm not, I'm not trying to push you, Jim, because I know this is not you or your department, but. This just jumps out at me and I understand insurance has, has gotten expensive for everybody. We're all dealing with that and our homeowner stuff, I'm sure, but this just really jumps out at me as an exorbitant expense and I, I think we just need better answers. So I appreciate you looking into it.
Yeah, and I, I, I can think of some things I think I want to share with the council that it might give a, a better detailed explanation on what, what's driving this. And, and, you know, what, what we're trying to do to, to mitigate it.
That'd be great. Thanks, Jim. I think the taxpayers deserved to know that.
Yep. Okay. The next one is, is information technology. And this is another. Budget that's over a half a million in expense. It starts on page twenty nine and ends on page thirty two. And it has a overall six point three seven percent increase. And I, I can honestly tell you that. There's one, one item that's driving that increase. Is. An initiative to move our accounting system onto the cloud or a hosted environment. And so. It has about a thirty thousand. Thirty, thirty three thousand dollar price tag. Included in this information technology budget. But, and, and that's what's driving this six point three seven percent increase in this, in this division. There's, there's some costs though that are not included in this budget. For example, there should be a reduction by moving to the cloud, there should be a reduction in our. Utilities and also for equipment. A lot of our hardware, our servers and things like that, we won't have to replace going forward. I, we had. Apex, our, our consultants, take a look at this for the last several years. Pushing it off, but I, I think it's finally gotten to the point where it's almost a break even considering. Cost savings in our utilities and in our equipment. And certainly from a sense of security. For the information that's contained in our system. It seems to make sense and Sean, I don't know if there's anything else you might add to that, but. That's the town side, about a thirty three thousand dollar cost in this budget, but I do believe there's going to be. Savings in either the capital budget or our, our utilities and public property. That will offset that. The only other thing I want to add is that, that that's the town side of this initiative. There's going to be a cost to the Board of Ed as well. And I'm not, I'm not sure whether they built that into their budget. But I would assume they'd have a similar increase in their technology by moving to this.
May I ask a question?
Certainly.
Is that moving something to the cloud? Does, is that becoming just an annual fee for that or is that some kind of one time charges there? I mean, how does, is, is it a recurring cost versus every five years you replace servers?
There's a recurring maintenance cost for that cloud service.
But that's not. Is that the munis hosted line where it says ninety two thousand?
Yes.
Okay, so that ninety two thousand is a one time, but then there's going to be a hosting fee of something next year? I mean, how's that going to work?
Yeah, well, there, you know, there were maintenance costs. Based on the, on our current system, which is not hosted, which are not in this budget anymore, so. I don't know if that's clear because you can't see year over year when you look at this document.
But is the quick answer, the ninety two thousand repeats itself next year is ninety eight?
Right.
Is that what's, okay, fine. So that's just a huge number that's going to get into a hundred thousands before we know it.
Yep, but there were other line items that, that were deleted this year. As a result of our putting that platform forward.
Thank you.
Sorry, we can distribute more detail on that if, if the council would like to see the cost comparison. As Jim said, some of them are directing this line item. Others again, and, and this has been a concerted effort, I think, over four or five years now, if I understand correctly, but. To try to move, we had a lot of servers in our server room, each one handling different platforms, whether. Recreation software or a, a variety of things that we've tried to move into the cloud for both. Security and continuity of services. In addition to just the physical location here in town hall and the risk of, of damage should there be a, you know, an event here at town hall. And the, and the power draw that they consume. So some of those, as Jim said, we did make slight adjustments. In the electricity lines and other places where moving to, to the cloud will, will have some other benefits in life from saving standard.
Are there other questions or comments? I don't see them when the. Yeah, please.
Jim, I'm assuming that the same company does the Board of Ed work as well?
Yeah, Apex is the consultant for both town and Board of Ed. Yep.
And I, I know we've done a lot of upgrades on this stuff and I'm not trying to be judgmental at all, but this is getting to be a very large line item. On both sides of the street and I just, you know, are, are we checking this for, you know, cost effectiveness? Is, is best we can.
You know, I. I, I'm feeling comfortable with, with this move to the cloud at this point. I, I'm feeling comfortable with, with this move to the cloud at this point. I know I struggled with it for a number of years now, we've pushed it off, but I, I think it. It's finally gotten to the point where it makes sense to, to make the move at this point. We have a lot of equipment that we'd have to replace. If, if, if we don't move in.
But, but I guess what I'm saying is we're, we're three hundred, almost three hundred fifty thousand dollars a year on the town side. I have to imagine the school is probably more than that. It's a significant line item and I understand IT is critically important. So, you know, again, I'm just asking the questions of layman. I'm assuming we're checking this regularly to ensure we're as cost effective as we can be.
Yeah. Well, you know, the, the only thing I'll say too is we have a, a tech, technology committee too that's. Part administrative staff from both the town and Board of Ed. In, in several council and members and members of the public, which, which has met periodically. Over the years, I don't know, I can't recall when we met last, but. I know we've talked about these initiatives in those discussions. Kind of just to make sure that everybody's on the same page about the direction we're going in.
Okay, but, but again, it's, are there other companies that do this? But do it cheaper? I, I guess, again, I'm not trying to belabor this point, but you know, every line item needs to be looked at on a consistent basis and. You know, I worry that we just kind of get, I'm not suggesting we shouldn't be. Making sure we have the best technology to serve our community and the kids.
Right.
But are we making sure, a lot of these are longstanding contractors that have worked with the town. And that can be good, but it can be bad. You know, sometimes when you stay with someone too long, if you don't press them. You know, the numbers just creep up, creep up. Next thing you know, you're not market. So I just want to make sure we're market for the services we're asking. And, you know, I'm a layman at this stuff. I know nothing about IT, so I just want to make sure that we're paying attention to these two line items. Because they're getting greater and greater every year.
Rob's point, if I may, I, I guess you're talking about Apex because they're a principal, they're, they're our team, correct? And did we, we have a contract with them, we have a contract with them, correct? And it has a term. When was that last, it's, it's what about a two-year-old contract now at this point? We're somewhere.
It was signed right after, I think right after I started here, so it's probably about two years now.
Yeah, because, and I don't know what the term was, but I know they came up for a renewal after performing a couple of good years. And from prior to that, we transitioned from, you know, town staff on both the ed side and, and, and the town side. Cobbling together our, our computers and all that good stuff. So we did make a big transition. But it doesn't mean we don't look into it again, no question about it.
Well, I get that Tim, but what I'm trying to get at is we're adding services. So when we renegotiated that, I don't think we talked about going to the cloud. My guess is we didn't. So now there's another thirty-five thousand dollars thrown into our budget this year. I assume, I assume you're talking the Board of Ed is going to have a similar situation. So now all of a sudden, there's another maybe seventy, eighty thousand dollars. That we didn't anticipate when we did that. So is Apex cost effective when they offer this additional service to us is really what I'm trying to get at.
So I think maybe I can clarify a little bit on that piece. The Apex itself is, can you see my screen here? The, they're the contractual IT provider here at the hundred and five thousand dollars. They don't provide the services you see hosted here, but they are our consultant that help us procure those services. Munis is a, is a standalone service owned by Sun Guard, I believe, or something, but they, they basically. Oh yeah, sorry, Tyler Technologies, thank you. They advise us on these, so these purchases were in the budget, whether we had Apex or not. That specifically Apex is this, this line item. And I think Arnett, you had, looked like you had your hand up, I think you had something you were adding there.
Yeah. Um, the contractual services for Apex. Has actually gone down in two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen, it was one, one hundred and five thousand nine seventy-five. And now it's a hundred and five, one twenty-seven. I admit it's a minor decrease, but in the past, past five years, we've not had an increase on their services.
All right, well, thank you. Again, as you can see, I don't know a lot about IT, so you know, it's very evident, but you know, my overall overarching point here is on every item. You know, these are crazy times and it just seems like every year we just add on to what we did last year. And I think we've got to get away from that. We've talked about kind of zero-based budgeting and recreating things from the ground up so that we make sure the taxpayers know. We're not just coming in and adding on to what we did last year. So, you know, we've talked about that, Tim, you and I, we're kind of pushing this a little bit. And I get concerned whenever a year we're just adding on to the prior year without making sure that we can show the public we've done our job. Ensure we're cost effective.
Yeah, absolutely. And, and I can say, I mean, we did sit down and review, I also reviewed all of these. These services we have and unfortunately they're just, they're a lot. And we have tax collector software, we have recreation software, we just have a lot of. And you kind of see them all costed out here, but absolutely, we, we, from the ground up every year, we try to make sure that. All of these are, are essential and critical. And there's certainly some that are, are more on the fence about that than others in terms of where we. Some of these that I feel like we could, we could maybe do without, but a lot of them have. Been added on in recent years and, and there are things that we're actively using, so we're, we're certainly monitoring that. The one I would point out that. Is new and an add-on this year, know before learning platform you'll see is four thousand two hundred and eighty-four dollars. I, I added that. As a townwide program we've been running to, for cybersecurity training and testing. So we've been actively. It's just something I'm a big believer in. We've, we've been actively not only training our employees, but testing them with fake spam emails. And, and monitoring and seeing who fails and who passes and in adding additional training. So. It, it's just another thing, that is an add-on this year, but it's one that I think is, is important.
All right, if I don't see any other comments, are there any other requests for comments? All right, oh, Mr. Velver.
Sean, on that point, I know you and I have had that conversation a little bit about, you know, making sure that the employees are tested on the. You know, on internet security and those types of things. I know that's very important. I'm sure most of us who work for companies have that same scenario because. You know, these towns, especially municipalities, they get locked up with ransomware. Most of that comes from employees who, you know. Who just click on links and, you know, random emails and stuff and they're not, they're not paying attention to some of this stuff. I think a lot of it comes from that. So. Have you found that some of that testing has been successful? Are you finding that the employees are getting better with their testing? Are they still failing? Are the same employees failing? Those types of things. And maybe this is outside a budget, but obviously. Something that, you know, we need to work at because ultimately those employees, if they keep failing, are, are risks to the town. For us being held up by some kind of ransomware. So that's why I think it's very important. I know all of us probably get tested, as I said, in our, in our work environment. On these things and municipal employees are always, you know, just as subject to private employee, or, you know. Private employees would be as far as the risk that they could impact their whole, either their whole company or the whole town. And it only has to be one weak link for that to happen, so.
Yep, absolutely. I mean, the nice thing with the, the platform that we're using is we are getting, you know, monitoring data on. On those that have passed and those that have, you know, certainly not only have taken the training, but, but we are able to kind of track that and see, you know, which kind of. Fishing campaigns are, are more successful, where we need to bolster our training. But I can also tell you anecdotally. People are just far more aware after this training than they were before, even to the point where I actually thought we were getting. I, I got a couple of text messages on a Friday night, actually it became about. Twenty or thirty text messages because people were getting emails that were allegedly from me, which I thought was part of the test. But it turns out that was, that was real. And so we were able to, you know, put out a notice right away and I, we talked to Apex to. Make sure everyone knew that it was, it was going on and actually it wasn't a test. So it, it was, but it was nice to see just how many people reached out and. Very rapidly, it must say.
Thank you.
I don't see any other, anybody else with other comments. All right, I think we're sort of run over the. Time that we had for attention span. I'll ask Arnett if there's anybody who asked questions or wrote in anything that we may need to address from the public.
There have been no comments submitted.
Okay, all right. All right, then I guess what we will do is we'll take general services and we can add that to another item. Another night, is that all right, Sean?
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine.
Do that, okay. All right. Well, if nobody else has any other comments regarding the budgets that we did review tonight, then we will certainly keep this information. We certainly asked for some information to come as follow-up and I would ask that we work with that tomorrow night, of course, is a council meeting, but next week we have two budget workshops. Following week two as well. So I would ask that we get this information as we move along and I will try to keep this to a limit of the two hours. Important topic, the attention that it deserves and that is our budget. So, all right, with that, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. I'm sorry, Rob, that part was for you to do as for the whole thing, but. All right, everybody have a good night, be safe and we will all be back here for your meeting to, to run tomorrow night, right, Rob?
Sounds good, yeah, hopefully.
See you tomorrow.
We'll be able to interact with the public again tomorrow night.
Yep, good, all right.
Have a good, have a good night.